It being seven thirty, I will call the Monday, April first, twenty twenty four, meeting to order. For to order business to call of order. Want to call your name, please respond. President, Councilor Brooks?
Present.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Councilor General Lowitz?
Present.
Councilor Harder?
Present.
Councilor Heath?
Present.
Councilor Haglund?
Present.
Councilor Mack?
Present.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Present.
Councilor Tison?
Present.
Councilor Tyros? And President Kuzinskas. So I have nine councilors present. In absence of this Council President Kuzinskas, the first order of business is the election of Council President Pro Tem for this evening, April first, twenty twenty four. At this time, I nominate the nomination now in order for our office of Council President Pro Tem. I open the floor for nominations. Councilor Mack?
I'd like to nominate Councilor Alex Durnalowicz as Council President Pro Tem to serve for this meeting in President Kuzinskas's absence.
Second.
Are there any other further nominations for President Pro Tem?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilor Tison, seconded by Councilor Mack, to close nomination. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Nominations are now closed. I will call the roll of members. Please state the name of the council you choose of your choice. Councilor Brooks?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Craig Cormier?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor General Lowitz?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Harder?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Heath?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Haglund?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Mack?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Thibault Munoz?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
Councilor Tison?
Councilor Durnalowicz.
And Councilor Tyros, absent. So I have nine councilors who voted for Council General Lowitz. Council General Lowitz is elected President Pro Tem for this evening, April first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, everyone. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening. Inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so guide and inspire us that we may deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start with the reading of the open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. Is there anyone recording tonight's meeting? Hearing none. On to the next item of the calendar, which is the reading of prior minutes. There are no prior minutes. There are no public hearings. Communications from the mayor. Orders, number one one two one four. An order transferring twelve thousand dollars from the building clerk salaries and wages to operating expenditures. Councilor Mack?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to refer the following items to the Finance Committee for study and report. One 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 two one four, one one two one five, one one two one six, one one two three six, one one two three seven, one one two three eight, and one one two three nine.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Mack to refer one one two one four, one one two one five, an order appropriating two hundred twelve thousand five hundred ten dollars from free cash to the Police Department New Vehicles account. One one two one six, an order appropriating forty thousand from free cash to the water removal account. One one two three six, an order appropriating three hundred ninety thousand from Water Enterprise surplus to repairs to Transmission Main account. One one two three seven, an order appropriating seventy five thousand from Water Enterprise surplus to the repairs to Water Main's account. One one two three eight, an order appropriating a hundred forty thousand dollars from Sewer Enterprise surplus to Chemical Treatment account. One one two three nine, an order appropriating seventy five thousand dollars from free cash to Energy and Utilities City Own Properties account. Excuse me, Councilor Mack, did you do through one one two one seven, eight, and nine as well?
Yes.
Okay. One one two one seven, a measure to establish a special reserve fund for the opioid settlement under MGL, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three. One one two one eight, a measure to approve an easement from Kristoff Chardia to the City of Gardner for the purpose of snow storage on Rock Street. And one one two one nine, a measure to rescind the acceptance of civil service for the members of the Gardner Police Department as adopted by the Town of Gardner on March fourth, nineteen twelve. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next is item one one two two zero, a communication from the mayor regarding the non-union salary study. Councilor Mack?
Thank you, Councilor Durnalowicz. I would like to refer this to the council as a whole and schedule an informal meeting. Once this entire salary study is completed, there is some areas that were not part of our report and is missing, as well as the narrative of the report. So I think it's important that in the next couple of months that we have an informal meeting once we have the complete study.
Second. Motion by Councilor Mack to refer the item to the council as a whole and schedule an informal meeting, seconded by Council Heath. Is there further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item one one two two one, a communication from the mayor regarding the emergency repairs made to the Crystal Lake Dyke by Greenwood Pool. Council Haglund?
Thank you, Councilor Durnalowicz. There are no objections. I may to move to place the following communication on file. Item one one two two one, one one two two two, one one two two three, one one two two four, one one two two five, one one two two six, one one two two seven, one one two two eight, one one two two nine, one one two three zero, one one two three one, one one two four zero, one one two four one, and one one two four two.
Second. Motion made by Council Haglund, seconded by Council Tisoni, to place items, one one, these following items on file. Item one one two two one, one one two two two, a communication from the mayor regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty three external audit. Item one one two two three, a communication from the mayor regarding calendar year twenty twenty three Employee Earnings Report. One one two two four, a communication from the mayor regarding federal earmark received by the city to replace the James Street Pump Station. One one two two five, a communication from the mayor regarding funds received from the National Opioid Distributor Settlement. One one two two six, a communication from the mayor regarding national grid construction work. One one two two seven, a communication from the mayor regarding downtown parking meters. One one two two eight, a communication from the mayor regarding the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Gardner and the Teamsters Local one seventy for animal control services. One one two two nine, a communication from the mayor regarding the Fire Department roof replacement. One one two three zero, a communication from the mayor regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Gardner and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, State Council ninety three, Local one seven one seven. One one two three one, a communication from the mayor regarding the city twenty twenty four flower pot program. One one two four zero, a communication from the mayor regarding a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for electric vehicle charging stations in the Milton Street Parking Lot. One one two four one, a communication from the mayor regarding national grid credits for streetlights. And one one two four two, a communication from the mayor regarding the city's contract for advanced life support ambulance services with Woods Ambulance. Is there any further discussion on any of those communications? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item, item one one two four three, a measure confirming the order of taking for ninety four Pleasant Street as voted on by the City Council on August first, two thousand twenty two. Councilor Mack?
Yes, Council Durnalowicz, I would like to make a motion to place, to refer the following items to the Finance Committee for study report. Items one one two four three, item one one two four four, item one one two four five, item one one two four six, item one one two four seven, item one one two four eight, item one one two four nine, and item one one two five zero.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Mack, seconded by Councilor Tisoni, to refer the following items to the Finance Committee. Items one one two four three, items one one two four four, a measure declaring the air rights of the Milton Street Parking Lot as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic canopy array. Measure declaring the roof of Department of Public Works Administration Building located at fifty Maker Drive as surplus for the purpose of leasing for a solar photovoltaic array. Measure declaring the roof of Department of Public Works Cold Storage Building located at fifty Maker Drive as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic array. Item one one two four seven, measure declaring the roof of Gardner City Hall located at ninety five Pleasant Street as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic array. Item one one two four eight, a measure declaring the roof of the Waterford Community Center located at sixty two Waterford Street as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic array. Item one one two four nine, a measure declaring the roof of Department of Public Works Garage Buildings located at four one six West Broadway as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic array. And item one one two five zero, a measure declaring the roof of the Gardner Fire Department Headquarters located at seventy City Hall Avenue as surplus for the purpose of leasing to a solar photovoltaic array. Is there any further discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item one one two five one, petition for home rule legislations entitled "An Act Changing the Use of School Land in the City of Gardner." I believe the mayor would like to speak on this item to begin with. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. This item before us is on somewhat of a time-sensitive timetable that we have, and it relates to the future community center that we're looking at building at Waterford Street School. It's something we've talked about on several different occasions. Under the Public Land Protection Act of the Commonwealth, the legislature must approve all changes of uses to public buildings in municipalities. The land that the now, the former Waterford Street School sits on was purchased by the city through an eminent domain taking in nineteen nineteen for the purposes of establishing Wilder Field Playground. In nineteen forty nine, and later adopted in the Acts of nineteen fifty, the City Council sent a home rule petition to the state legislature to take a certain portion of that land out of the provisions of playground purposes and put those into the purposes of housing a public school building. That was approved and signed by Governor Dever at the time. And then, as we are talking about today, the building isn't set to be used for purposes of housing a city public school at this time, as we do have the new Gardner Elementary School. The school committee voted to relinquish their use of the building in October of two thousand twenty two. However, we needed to have a separate survey done of the property to subdivide the property out from what was voted in nineteen fifty to remove the provisions of that land from playground and park purposes to educational purposes, and then keep what was there under playground and park purposes there for Wilder Field. That survey has since been completed last week and recorded with the Registry of Deeds. And now that that survey is done and the parcel is separate, we can move forward with this home rule petition to change that purpose of use from an educational purpose for the purpose of housing a city public school to general municipal purposes that allows the city to utilize that building for the highest and best use that the city deems appropriate at that time, as it sits right now, the purpose of establishing a new nonprofit community center in the City of Gardner. This would allow us to then go out and lease certain portions of that building to different nonprofits in the area, move different city services into that area. Right now, the most we can do is what's called a license agreement, which is a, creates a tenancy at will with the different tenants who are in that building. They do still pay rent, they do still move forward with the different aspects of a light lease, for lack of a better term. However, there's no long-term protections there, so they are still subject to different aspects of the law that wouldn't be subject if we could get a long-term lease. And we also have a better financial benefit as a city if we can go enter, excuse me, enter into a long-term lease. If we don't do this right now, all leases in that building have to be approved by the Commonwealth, which is a very time-length process. So this will allow us to continue to move forward with that process at a quicker speed, in a speed that's the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I move to pass the item.
Second.
Motion made by Council Haglund, seconded by Councilor Mack, to pass the item. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Under, next under petitions, applications, communications. Item one one two three two, a measure to adopt local option room occupancy excise rate increase under Mass. General Law sixty four G, Section three A. Councilor Tisoni?
Mr. President Pro Tem, I would like to take the following, one one two three two, one one two three three, and one one two three four, and refer those items to the committee as a whole for discussion.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Tisoni, seconded by Councilor Heath, to refer items, the following items to the council as a whole. One one two three two, one one two three three, a measure to adopt local option sales tax on meals under Mass. General Law sixty four L, SEC two A. And item one one two three four, a resolution to review the city zoning map for accuracy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item one one two three five, a resolution relating to the future of Helen Mae Solder. Council Haglund?
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. Leading to a motion, I think I saw, like some of you did, a recent article where the mayor outlined the status of repurposing and redeveloping various school buildings no longer in use. I commend the mayor for this, as I think in the past, we've let buildings sit far too long, and in some cases, lose the opportunity to do anything with them, other than knocking them down. Drilling that pack is Helen Mae Solder, which as yet does not have a plan. This resolution would call on the mayor to prepare for the council and evaluation with options for that property. And there's two reasons why I think we should get that process going. First, I did teach there from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, so I'm very familiar with the state of that building and the issues it has, even when it was being upcapped regularly. Some of which I think are time-sensitive, especially now that it is unoccupied. The other piece is that certain options may require title work, as the parcel on which the building sits is a megalot, so that contains Stonefield, the Big Chair, Elm Street School, et cetera. And so with that, I move to pass the resolution and send it to the mayor.
Motion made to pass the resolution by Council Haglund, seconded by Councilor Thibault Munoz. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee. Item one one two zero nine, an order appropriating seventy seven thousand three hundred eighteen dollars from free cash to the IT Department City Hall Cybersecurity System Account. Council Mack?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. The Finance Committee met on this item, this is for a three-year service agreement with, to serve as a, to enforce the city's cybersecurity. Our current system would become the backup system, which would reduce the hacking attacks that could lead to ransoms on the city. And so Director O'Keefe has done much research and is very knowledgeable about the different security systems and what is needed. So we aren't in the situation as other local communities have been. So the Finance Committee approved this order for passage by the council.
Second. Motion made to pass the order by Councilor Mack, seconded by Councilor Heath. Is there discussion on the motion? Do want to note that this item and the following two do require a roll call vote. Hearing no, need for discussion? Can the clerk call the roll?
Council Brooks?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Council General Lowitz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Haglund?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Council Tison?
Yes.
Nine yeas?
Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item one one two one zero, an order appropriating forty nine thousand dollars from free cash to the mayor's unclassified professional services grant writing expense. Report from the Finance Committee, Council Mack?
Thank you, Council Durnalowicz. This is for a seven-month contract to work on obtaining federal grant opportunities for the City of Gardner. Keller Partners would be the grant writing company that we would be contracting with. If you recall, we had allocated sixty thousand dollars for local grant writing, which was concentrated on state grants. We have received two point seven million dollars on, and state grants thus far. And, but they only focus on state grants. With Keller Partners, we would be the only municipality in Massachusetts they would work on to apply for federal grants, which is much more substantial pool of grants than the ones that are just, just within the state. So the Finance Committee met on this order, and I move the order for approval from the council.
Second. Motion by Councilor Mack, seconded by Councilor Tisoni, to approve the order. Is there further discussion? Council Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I am going to support this. I think it's great that we're going after grant funding. I think a piece that is added in this is that they also manage the grant, so they will do the filings and so on. My one note of caution is that, to make sure that we don't get so far ahead with grants that we can't manage the grants and the projects associated with them. I pointed as an example to the Safe Roots to School Grant that was redoing a part of Elm Street between Temple and Cross Street. It was a grant obtained by the Assistant Principal at Elm Street School several years ago. He left, and that project has been orphaned ever since. And I think it's moving along, but it became something that was a question of who in the city was having ownership of the grant. So I just want to make sure that as we're, as we're pursuing grants, there is, there are people within the city government who are willing to take ownership of the project itself, not just getting the money, but completing the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brooks. Any further discussion? Council Tisoni?
Yes, I would just like to echo exactly what Council Brooks just stated. I think it's of the utmost importance that these grants get managed and sought through to their fullest entirety. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Council Tisoni. Council Mack?
I just want to concur with the other two councillors. I think the importance of this allocation for federal grants is that they do do the follow-up process, the follow-up reports. That's extremely important, especially if grants get audited, to make sure the funds are being used in the appropriate manner. So I think that across every department, we need to make sure that those that have grants or receive grants are doing their due diligence to follow them through. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council Brooks?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Council General Lowitz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Haglund?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
Council Tison?
Yes.
Nine yeas?
Nine yeas, the motion carries. One one two one three, an order appropriating fifty five thousand five hundred, five hundred dollars from free cash to the Elections and Registration Department for Election Officer Salary and Professional Services Expenses. Report from the Finance Committee, Council Mack?
Thank you, Council Durnalowicz. This item, the appropriation from free cash, the mayor is asking to bring the account back into the black from the funds that were used for the state's special state senate election for cost of materials, as well as the materials needed for the city charter vote that was put out to our citizens. Yes, we do get a very little bit of reimbursement from the state when you have a special election. However, this money is needed to, because the additional cost for materials in election officer salaries and professional services. Thank you. I make a motion that we move this order.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Mack, seconded by Councilor Tisoni, to move the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk, can the clerk please call the roll?
Council Brooks?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Council General Lowitz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Haglund?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Thibault Munoz?
Yes.
And Council Tison?
Yes.
Nine yeas?
Nine yeas, the motion carries. Item one one two one two, election of the city clerk, report from the Finance Committee, Council Mack?
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we have more time on this item, as the election of the city clerk is one of the few positions that is voted on by the City Council, and as two councillors are absent tonight, the Finance Committee would request more time.
There are no objections, the Finance Committee will be granted more time. The Finance Committee will be granted more time. Appointments Committee. One one two seven, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Thomas Zupa to the position of Building Commissioner for a term expiring January ninth, two thousand twenty seven. Council Heath?
Thank you, Councilor Durnalowicz, also known as President Pro Tem. The Appointments Committee has not gotten to meet with the, well, haven't gotten to meet together. So I've asked for more time for the following orders. One 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 two seven, one 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 three nine, one 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 four zero, one 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 four one, one 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 four two, one 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 four three, one 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 four four, one 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 five zero, and one one two zero seven.
If there are no objections, the Appointments Committee will give you more time for one one, one 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 two seven, one one, one 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 three nine, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Cortez to the position of Planning Board Member for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 four zero, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Swartz to the position of Planning Board Member for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 four one, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Stephen Cormier to the position of Planning Board Member for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 four two, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Charles Blank to the position of Board of Assessors for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 four three, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Rick Germano to the position of Local Inspector for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 four four, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of James Impreza to the position of Plumbing and Gas Inspector for a term expiring January fourth, twenty twenty seven. One 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 five zero, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Timothy Horgan to the position of Redevelopment Authority for a term expiring January eighth, twenty twenty seven. And one one two zero seven, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Linda Demek to the position of Disability Commission Member for a term expiring March fourth, twenty twenty seven. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the Appointments Committee will be granted more time for those items. Safety Committee. Item one one zero eight six, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter six hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section twenty four, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Comey Street, in the City Council, referred to the Public Safety Committee on November sixth, twenty twenty three. More time on November twentieth, twenty twenty three, December fourth, twenty twenty three, December eighteenth, twenty twenty three, January second, January sixteenth, February fifth, February twentieth, and March fourth of this year. Council Cormier?
Yes, thank you, President Pro Tem. As this item is with the Police Department on a trial basis, I believe they're just entering their fourth week of this trial. We would ask for more time.
If there are no objections, the Safety Committee will be granted more time. The Safety Committee will be granted more time. Next item, one 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 five, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter six hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section twenty four, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Douglas Road. Douglas Road. Report from the Safety Committee, Counsel Cormier.
Thank you, President Protem. We are still waiting on the police department to enact this on a trial basis, so I ask for more time.
As long as there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Item 11203, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 41, entitled Handicap Parking, Central Street, from a point 33 feet from the corner of Maple Street Eastly for 40 feet, two spaces. Report from the Safety Committee, Counsel Cormier.
Thank you, President Protem. As discussed in our last meeting, this was just a, uh, clearinghouse item, we already had these handicap spaces designated, so this is just adding into the ordinance, so I therefore move to send the item to its second and final printing.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Heath to send the item to its second and final printing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Item 11204, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Streets, Edgell Street, from Elm Street to Lawrence Street. Report from the Safety Committee, Counsel Cormier.
Thank you, President Protem. Uh, this item is waiting on the police department to enact on a 60-day trial, so I therefore ask for more time.
There is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Item 11205, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Park Street from Cod Street to Central Street. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Cormier.
Uh, thank you, President Protem. Uh, as we discussed in our last meeting, this was to clean up, uh, the existing ordinance after the bike trail extended the north side of the road and took away this parking, so I therefore move this item to second and final printing.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Hardern to move this item to its second and final printing. Is there further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Item 11206, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 24, entitled Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets, Pine Street, from West Line Street Southerly for a distance of 50 feet. Counsel Cormier.
Thank you, President Protem. Again, this item, we discussed in our last meeting, is the, uh, single parking spot closest to West Line Street in front of the library. Uh, it causes a terrible blind spot if you're coming up from West Line Street onto Pine Street. Uh, I therefore, uh, move the item to second and final printing.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counsel Hardern to send the item to second and final printing. Is there further discussion on the item? Counsel Mack.
I just want to thank the, um, Traffic Commission for doing this, um, I had pointed it out to them, um, especially after, during Election Day, um, coming up to there, you just, it was just so blind, it was a blind spot, and it was very dangerous, so I, I thank them for being proactive in, 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 um, in addressing this item.
Thank you, Counsel Mack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Service Committee, item 11199, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Allen Street, to install one jointly owned pole on Allen Street, beginning at a point approximately 430 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Allen Street and Winslow Street, install one jointly old pole, number seven, for new houses. Report from the Service Committee, Counsel Tassoni.
Yes, President, thank you, President Protem. Uh, the Service Committee, uh, did meet on this item, and the city engineer, Rob Oliver, uh, wrote, uh, a letter in favor, as well as the, uh, Service Committee voted to support this petition, uh, with the caveat of, uh, a guy wa- a guy wire being added to it, however, and, and National Grid is aware, and I have been in co- in contact with both National Grid, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this petition, um, as presented.
Second. Motion made to approve the petition by Counsel Tassoni, seconded by Counsel Tibo Munoz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The motion carries. Welfare Committee, item 11211, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner to add a new Chapter 15 to be entitled Agricultural Commission. Um, Counsel Mack.
Yes, the Welfare Committee respectfully asks for more time on this item.
As long as there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time. Hearing none, the committee will be granted more time. No unfinished business that matters for reconsideration, there is no new business. Counselor comments and remarks? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier to adjourn after the reading of the closing prayer, seconded by Counsel Mack, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rise for the reading of the closing prayer.
Almighty Father, who sees us over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed are the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the peoples who represent us here, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.
Meeting is adjourned.